We'll call the meeting to order today is May 6, 2020 A.C., after Corona. So we'll call the meeting to order. Additional agenda and content items? Generally, I don't think so.
No.
Okay, so we'll move right on to delegations. Anyone from the public like to speak? And delegations. You can unmute yourself, I think. If not, send us a chat. I'll ask again. Anybody from the public? Last, one last time. Is there any chats? Is there anybody from the public? A few people signing in today. Okay. All right, then we'll move on. And there is public comment at the end if someone does have some comment. We have a whole package of approval of minutes for special meetings. My guess is these were, are these the budget meetings?
No, they, these.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Right, so, okay. We have approval of, we have two, four, six, seven sets of meetings.
Probably do one at a time or just do one big?
Well, some people may not have made the dates. You can group the dates together, but generally if one didn't make one, yeah.
I'll do each one at a time, makes it easier. I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 2, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion seconded. Comments or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstain?
I abstain.
That was Mr. Dagel?
Correct.
Abstains on March 2nd. Moving on.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 4, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
Second.
Okay, second. This is just the special meeting, March 4th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Mr. Dagel? Regular meeting, March 4th?
Well, actually, no. Move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 16, 2020, as submitted.
Do you have a regular meeting of March 4th as well?
Okay, I'm sorry. That's right, that's at the end here. Move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 4, as 2020 has submitted.
No, regular meeting. We already did the special meeting.
Yeah.
That's what I just said.
On the agenda is regular meeting, March 4th.
Yes.
You did the special already.
Yeah.
So your motion is to approve the regular meeting of March 4th?
Yes, 2020.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstain?
Abstain.
There you go. Okay, let's go to the 16th. It was one meeting.
Okay, there's a special meeting and I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 16, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
Second. Any comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The April 15th?
Okay, that, I'll do the regular, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 15th, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
Motion seconded. Further comments or corrections? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Right, now we have the 21st of April for another special. Move to approve the special meeting minutes of April 21st, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any comments, corrections? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? That is.
And finally, I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of April 27, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Comments, corrections? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Any abstain? Thank you, Kevin. Consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of May 6, 2020, in the amount of $2,532.99.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any corrections? Comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Unanimous? We have just a couple items on new business. They shouldn't take long at all. In fact, really kind of quick. Approval of the transfer of $1,000 from contingency for programming required for the tax system due to the deferment option. Mr. McCullough, our able tax collector is here, as well as Anna, who can explain the need, if you would. Mr. McCullough?
Yes, I believe the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, it was approved to go with option A, which was a deferral for 90 days, requiring whoever wanted to participate to send in an application, which is provided on the website. This $1,000 would be an upgrade to our software regarding the coding. And the coding would be applied by Walsh to whoever applied for the deferral to 90 days instead of the standard 30-day grace period in July.
Did we lose you there, John?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you kind of, maybe it was me, maybe faded out. We heard, we heard just about everything.
I hope so.
So, yeah, yeah, so we need $1,000 for the reprogramming. Obviously, this is over above. We have to program people not to get late notices and the 18% interest rate beginning on August 1st. That gets deferred to some people if they elect to be on the deferment program. And that, that, that would kick in, you know, and Walsh has to go in and reprogram our computers to do that. So that's what that $1,000 is for.
Yes, it'd be taken care of during the pre-billing period.
Right, which is coming up soon.
Yes.
Gathering, we'll be gathering the tax bills all together this time next month, so. Thank you, thank you, John. Are there any questions for John?
Got a motion first?
Well, if you, sure?
Sure. Move to appropriate and transfer $1,000 from account 01-01-120-200-500 contingency to account 01-01-103-200-216. Service contracts for special programming for implementation of executive order 7S deferment program and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
I'll second.
Motion is seconded. Are there any questions or comments for John or for Anna or myself? Okay. Very good then. We have a motion, we have a second. John, thanks for your attendance tonight.
Thank you.
And this is a lot of work on, on your department. I know that I talked to your staff today while we were in the building and mentioned that their, your department's going to be coming back to work a little quicker than everybody else because you have a lot of, this is your prep work time. So I know that you'll be back to work in full, probably in the next week or so. We have motion on the table. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, thanks again, John.
Thank you, Mark. Rest of the board members?
Thank you. Next on our agenda, I think I'm working off the most current agenda, is the discussion of possible action of the Public Safety Project. The Vision Committee is hard at work analyzing and detailing the actual costs of the project and all the different puzzle pieces that are coming together. They're not ready for us to move on this or to receive a final report yet. They're still hard at work and we actually called the meeting. We adjourned a meeting about 10 minutes before we started this meeting, maybe seven minutes before. But they're going to be back at work next Tuesday to maybe finish up the plan and then we'll be able to kind of dig in. Paul, do you want to add anything tonight on that as the Chair of the Vision Committee?
I just think we're trying to be very inclusive of all the costs associated with executing of the project going forward. Lot of good interaction and comments from the committee, so it's, we're working hard. I'd say we're 90, 95% there with what we think the costs are, although we have not voted on each line item, so there's still some potential changes. But I'm very confident that, that the recommendation coming forward is going to provide us with a facility that is warranted and that'll provide for the good functionality for the emergency management, emergency response personnel that are going to house the building. So I'm very confident. It's been a lot of hard work, taking some time. We did, at our last meeting last week, approve the selected bidder. We are not ready to go to contract with that bidder at this time, pending approval of our recommendation as we present it to the Board of Selectmen and subsequent presenting to the Board of Finance. So we are very, very close to the goal line and we will endeavor to try and be in a position to have something ready to present at our next scheduled meeting. If for some reason we fall off of that, we'll probably ask to have a special meeting so that we can make that presentation going forward.
Thank you. Great. It seems that the Vision Committee is being thorough and, and, and yes, and desire to put a first-class project together and complete with, you know, needs in the future as well, put it that way. And we will see that coming at us probably within the month. So we'll be prepared for that and for discussion and approval, hopefully. Be nice to see the end of that coming. So thank you, thank you. I thank you every meeting, Paul. It's a lot of work and you're in the hot seat over there. I appreciate, we're fortunate to have you.
There's a lot of people doing a lot of work, including my two fellow Board of Selectmen, who are
Yeah.
part of our commission.
You got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dan and Kevin on that. Discussion possible action, then, point and pay agreement. Anna, you're here, right? There you are. There you are. Still at your desk, I'm still at my desk. This is just all day long. This is what we do.
So point and pay is a, an application for use of making payments by credit card, debit card, using online. We're actually looking to get a credit card device in the office at the counter so that people can make their tax payments. We currently do have a system that we use. It's called Official Payments. We've been using that probably for some 20-plus years. That was a good product when the town first started using it, but there really haven't been any updates and enhancements to it. So this point and pay application, it's my understanding that when a taxpayer uses that to make their payments online, it's going to update their accounts like immediately. So this way, you know, people are going to know that their payments have been, been applied. So that's why we're looking to do this. So I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Attorney O'Connell has reviewed the contract and given his blessing, so to speak, for Mark to be able to sign it so we can move forward with this.
Mark, a question. Is this for just taxes or does this go for town clerk, building and so forth as well?
So, yes, that's a good, we are, we are going to have it installed in the clerk's office and building planning and zoning. And we may look at commission on, commission on aging for her to have a device in her office as well.
And Anna, I know Dave Putnam has a service. He's been doing for, as well, for a long time for beach passes. Is this going to replace what he has? It'll be all one or will he still have a separate one?
He'll, he'll still continue to use the one that he has at this point in time.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a cost associated with this?
Yeah.
Okay, so this will be at, we're going to apply this application using the method, no, no additional cost to the town. The cost will be borne by the individuals who choose to use the application.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the cost?
Okay, so if you use a debit card, there's a flat fee of $3.50. If you pay by e-check, there's a flat fee of $2. And then for others, it's a, if you use your credit card, it's a 2.5% fee. Or, and then the minimum fee is $2.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll move to authorize the first selectmen to execute in an aim and on behalf of the town, a contract, an application form with point and pay incorporated and to execute and deliver all of their documents and perform all of their acts necessary or desirable to implement said contract.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any further comments, questions? I thank John, I thank Anna and all those associated with putting this together. We had some old technology and old program and I think this will be a benefit to the taxpayers and for convenience factors here. It's an upgraded service. Good stuff. So all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It's unanimous. I say it. We have ex officia reports. I will say, as we start rolling these out, of course, we're, you know, meetings haven't been being conducted, although they're now starting to. We've given permission for everybody to get back to work via Zoom. I think some of the commissions will hold off until maybe we get back into the room. I anticipate, I anticipate perhaps in June, being able to have some meetings in person into the big room. We will practice social distancing and maybe not use the long table, but spread out like we did, like the Board of Selectmen did. Three up and three down. And, and we might see that in June. In the meantime, any, any commissions that have pressing business, especially land use commissions, of course, us, the Board of Finance, Board of, Board of Education have been doing this for all along. The thing, they should be encouraged to get back into work. And I know the land use commissions are working on a system. It's, it's so litigious. There's applications and lawyers involved with almost every application, so we've got to do it right. And I think, I applaud the land use commission for, for taking the time and doing it right, consulting with the proper authorities and making sure we do do it right. There are some applications that are pending and we will see the, we'll see these commissions back in action soon. That's, so, so you should all be on notice that you might have to get back to work other than every other Wednesday or so. So, but in the meantime, are there any ex officia reports? Or reports?
I have a couple. Yeah, I have a couple of comments.
Yes.
Going back to our April 15th meeting, 3F, we had discussion from SCARA and needed an amendment to the ordinance for the municipal solid waste. And the minutes had stated that we would take this up at the next regular meeting and it wasn't on the agenda this time, so we just want to make sure that that doesn't fall through the cracks. That was April 15th meeting and that's 3F in the minutes.
There is some time, in fact, if you let me just answer that one. I didn't mean to interrupt you and I apologize, but there, we have some time on that. And where it is an ordinance change and it does require the public meeting and all, we just thought we should wait as long as possible because we might be able to get this done in the room in June or July, or at least some of us in the room and allow the public to come in. So there is some room on that, on the calendar to be able to get that done. So we're aware of it and we won't let it slip. Thank you for reminding us.
Okay. Secondly, I had inquired at the April, if we could lock in the current reduced oil prices. I believe Mr. McCullough was going to look into that. I don't know if there was any action, has been any action on that, but I just had read something in the news that we're not going to be affecting these low oil prices for much longer.
Yeah, the current oil contract we're in, I don't know when he renews it, but you're right. And he's aware of that. We just had a conversation, a short meeting today on it. We were into a contract where sometimes you're in these contracts and you buy 15,000 gallons at a low price, whatever the price is. And if you don't use the 15,000 gallons, you have to pay for it anyway. And we were in a contract that allowed us out because I think we spent, we, you know, it was a warm winter. So we were fortunate, we didn't use the whole contract and we're, we're not going to have that expense. But Joe is working on next year's oil price right now. Good talking.
Thank you. And my last comment, I'm going to take the liberty of speaking on behalf of the rest of the Board of Selectmen and thank you for stepping forward and taking a reduction in your salary to help out the town with the budget situation that we're facing. And I will reminisce in not thanking you for doing that at the last meeting. So thank you for doing it.
You're very kind. It's, yeah, listen, you know, I, when I'm sitting around that table with all the department heads saying, I need more, I need more. I can't look at my, my schedule, my, my budget and not do the same. And there's no room in our budget, so. Thank you for the acknowledgement. We downplayed it this year a little bit. Tough times. Anyone else have any ex officia reports or, again, reports from the field? What you're hearing, what you're seeing, what you'd like to feedback?
Mark, I was going to mention, you're going to cover the Parks and Rec meeting from the other night. You, because you were a part of that too, so.
Yeah.
Beaches and whatnot, so. I'll, I'll leave that to you then.
Oh, the beaches.
I'll add, we had a building, a Zoom building commission last month. Majority of it was to pay bills. There also, there were some holdbacks. Now that they're all caught up and paid their bills, they're going back to the holdbacks, including some of the parking lots behind the schools and stuff like that, that was in the holdback. So that, they're still moving forward, obviously, with that and planning hasn't had anything, so.
Right, but they're coming up soon.
Yep.
Who has wetlands?
I do.
Yeah, they, they have some meetings coming up. They've been very anxious to get back into it, so.
Yeah, they're hoping to start next week.
You got it.
It hasn't been scheduled yet.
Yeah, they're working on a schedule now. Any other ex officia reports?
Not me. Historic Properties hasn't met, nor has the Smith Harris. So hopefully next month, we'll get back on schedule.
Terrific. I'll try to keep my.
Okay, you could be updating us on Board of Finance actions?
For the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are meeting to start the deliberation next, well, Thursday, tomorrow night. Board of Ed will meet with the Board of Finance, one of these Zoom meetings, open to the public. And then the Board of Finance will meet with town departments for half a day on Saturday and an evening session on Monday. That is the current schedule. And then I think they meet Wednesday, their regular meeting and so on and so forth. So then they'll start the deliberations from there. They're still scheduled. The end date is to set that, no rate, on the 27th of May, I believe it is. And I think we're holding to that, that schedule and we'll cram everything else in the next couple of weeks. So the action will start tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. My comments, you know, I've been at COG meetings and CCM meetings and such. The, the confusion at the town municipal level at, at Ledge Light Health District, at the COG and we're all frustrated in that the governor has made, has done some actions and we appreciate his leadership and all the executive orders and in the promise that May 20th will bring about maybe phase one of opening, but with very, very little details. We're not getting the details. So we have everybody going, what is opening going to look like? What's going on? We've heard that restaurants might be able to open, but only with outdoor dining. Well, that doesn't really work in New England. This isn't San Diego where it's like perfect every day. If you're a restaurateur, you can't possibly buy the provisions for the next week or schedule help if you're not sure if it's going to rain or not or be under 70 degrees and people won't want to sit outside. So we don't think that that's right. As, as a coalition, the COG, most of the COG towns today were to let the governor advocating to consider 50% inside dining when they do open up again. We are concerned. There's a lot of small businesses and retail shops. I mean, a lot of discussion has been out there about why can we open up a Walmart? And that's considered essential, but we can't open up, you know, the treasure store downtown or one of these other retail spots, you know, a Grace. Why can Target be open and not Grace? It seemed like it would be even safer with less traffic and more ability to cleanse. So we're, we're discussing that at that level. Lots of that. A lot of, a lot of confusion about camps, about summer school ability, about youth sports. Can they get, can we get the nine-year-olds yoga or the 15-year-olds or however old Mark Salerno's slugger is? Get them back on the field and, and throw a baseball around. That's common. The, the, I think the world is divided between, let's open up this economy, let's open up the beaches, let's keep, yeah, everything, let's get things going and the others that are being extra cautious. And I understand that both sides to that. You know, we, if you, if you listen, you can understand both sides have good arguments there. But, you know, the, half the emails I get on a Monday morning is, we should close the boardwalk. And the other half is, thank you for keeping the boardwalk open. It's my only, it's my only opportunity to go out or the beaches or the parks or the hiking trails and everything else. Bringing up beaches, you saw the action. I think it was in the paper today. Rumor has it, I don't tend to read it much anymore, but that the beaches are open. And we're going to try to sell passes and we're going to make it resident only because we're going to be dramatically decreasing the capacity of the beaches and the parks. This is a temporary situation. It's not a policy change by any means. This is an emergency measure for, for the safety and the health of the patrons and where space will be limited. We felt this was necessary at least to start the season. This discussion about, you know, if we get to noon on a particular day and there's plenty of room on the beach, should we sell day passes? I think yes. But right now, we just wanted to start talking about the selling of beach passes and, and the Board of, well, the Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission made action last, last evening, I believe, to consider the beaches resident only for now. And that will start on Memorial Day. And maybe by then, it's a whole new world. And, and I'm in the meeting tomorrow with the DEEP Commissioner, talking about rocking neck, talking about what they're going to do about their parks throughout the state, through all the beaches in the state, but specifically our beach, our, our state park here on the shoreline. And, and do they have a plan? Again, we're talking about details. I can't fault anybody where, where, you know, the world is changing every day you wake up and there's something else to consider. There's no playbook to read from. There's no history to go back on and learn from and implement and not make the same mistake twice because we've never been here before. So we're just doing our level best and we will continue to do that and measure, measure where we're at when, when it's, when it's appropriate to do so. Lot of discussions, lot of discussions. Lastly, I had a discussion with Barbara, Barbara Johnson Low. Historic Properties, and and also Ben Bullock, who runs the Samuel Smith House, I said, you know, I'm reading the article in the paper about the Flowers House, now it has a name, the house that's gonna be demolished across from the fire station, and all these people that signed a petition to save our heritage and save our precious homes, and I'm not sure that home was in very good condition for a long period of time. But I wonder if we can get a hundred dollars out of each of those thousand people who signed a petition, petitioners to donate toward the Samuel Smith House, we have a house that we're trying to preserve, that the town voted on ten years ago to save, yet we don't have enough money to preserve it. So, you know, we, maybe because it's a Dollar General coming in and they legitimately bought the property, it was for sale for a year, and nobody wanted it, they finally came in, nobody suggested on preserving the home. But maybe this is an opportunity where we can take, we can take the, you know, sad story that an old building is coming down and turn it into, hey, you know, we're already doing this in our town. We have the Samuel Smith House that is in dire need of donation and help and maybe volunteerism. So all the passion that was surrounding the demolition of this building that will be coming up in the next couple of weeks, if not sooner. If we could put that energy toward preserving some houses that we already own, we're gonna try to come up with a campaign and maybe work with the builder of, or just take pictures and maybe put articles out there. I think there's an opportunity, I see there's an opportunity there to say, okay, put your money where your mouth is, let's all get behind one of these houses that we put our necks out to preserve, because it was a split vote, and if you remember, there's a whole lot of people that said, let's preserve this thing. And the passion is there, and the desire is there to preserve our heritage. And then it all went away. So, as you know, we put some money into our budget this year, we need to do something, it is an asset that we need to invest in, but hopefully the townspeople who want to invest in our heritage of this town will take a look at that house and say, you know, here's a hundred bucks, here's three hundred dollars, whatever it is. How can I, how can I sign up and volunteer, be a part of this? So, any comments?
Hey, Mark, I'll just, oh, go ahead, Roseanne.
So I think it's a, it's a good idea. And I agree, I think, I think one of the differences is that this particular house, the Flowers House, had, it's very visible.
It's visible.
You know? And so it's on people's minds, and they drive by every day, and you know, whereas the other property is, you know, not in such clear view. You don't drive by that every day, and I think that's part of the difference, and so I think we have to do a better job not only of trying to get the money to support it, but the visibility.
I concur, yeah, the visibility is an issue, and the fact that it's a Dollar General, like, you know, like we need one of those, and and I'm not a big fan, I've pledged that I won't shop there, but I probably shouldn't have said that at a public meeting, I'm sorry. It's not, it's not appropriate.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
You know, yeah, but, you know, capitalism is alive and well in America, and people have the right to develop their property, but we don't have to be forced to shop at places like that.
What's the phrase, what's the phrase from the song, you can't always get what you want?
Okay, I thought you were gonna sing Dave Paradise and put up a parking lot, you know, but that's more Dan kind of.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna go there.
Can you play it on your keyboard, please?
And if I might, you know, I'm ex officio for Historic Properties, and I'm glad you brought it up because you know, they're very concerned about having the funds took to work on the Sam Smith House particularly. I've driven down there a few times recently, there's been a lot of hard work done on that house, if you go behind it, you'll see how much they've done, there's a lot of spirit there, I'm really hopeful that, you know, this is a crazy year, let's face it, but that we can help support them, I think that's a great idea, people that have an interest, maybe we can find a vehicle so they can make a donation to really help that place out, and it'll be, it'll be a great resource once it's preserved the way it should be, so I'm in fully support of that.
I would support if they asked us, and you can carry this back to the Commission, if they asked the six selectmen or as many who would wish to show up for a photo shoot in front of the Samuel Smith House, in a show of solidarity that we want to preserve this house, and come on, people, let's step it up, it's been ten years, let's help out. I'd be perfectly willing, I think the time is now to put our energy into this, we saw all that energy get put into the demolition situation down on Post Road, so if you take that back, Dan, maybe my fellow selectmen might join you, me, and well, the rest of us, just have a shot taken in front of this Samuel Smith House, let's get this.
I think it's a great idea, especially right now, because our facial hairs all look interior of the time of when that house was built.
We'll be six feet apart along the front of the building.
Yeah, there we go.
Facebook video. I will be shaving, I promise, soon, it's really.
My daughter kindly gave me a haircut a couple days ago, so I don't have the Jerry Garcia look anymore, but that's all right.
Well, next meeting, you'll have to go live with your video.
I will, I'll surprise you all.
It looks like Salerno got a home haircut too.
Who's that?
Is it Mark, did you get a haircut?
No, no, I have one at eight AM on the twentieth though.
I know, I thought.
Yeah.
I got a home haircut, much more manageable.
Hey, I like that idea, I like that idea a lot, we should make this happen, and I bet you we could raise a lot of money doing that. Secondly, it was good to see the sidewalk being completed across from the high school.
Yeah.
That's fantastic, I use that a lot, so I'll, I'm happy that's there, that's a long time overdue, that's all.
And that same sidewalk group is in front of, well, Ron's Guns, where we had the big water disaster, water main break a couple, god, it must have been a year, year and a half ago, big situation, they went back and they're improving that sidewalk now. It was a temporary situation, so they're doing work out there, and on my street, they're putting in Comcast, so they're digging up everyone's front lawn, so that's coming across town as well, is there anything else from the meeting tonight?
Mark, did you want to mention about celebrating Prime Day?
Well, we're still, it's still in a temporary holding pattern, we're doubtful, again, this is one of these details that we know that, you know, we don't think it's gonna be allowed, we'd like to see more coming, guidance coming from the Department of Health and the Governor's Office, but we, the decision will be made after the twentieth, when the governor does come up with some details on the reopening, we think that public gatherings will be limited in scope, so you're seeing a lot of the events being canceled for even the fall, Brooklyn Fair, you know, it was canceled the other day, the longest-running fair in America, I think, so you know, my guess is, we're in a holding pattern still, but yes, my guess is shortly after the governor's announcement on the twentieth, supposedly on the twentieth, that we will have to make a decision one way or the other. And it just might be a year without those kind of festivities, we'll be hopeful for the Oyster Fest, the things might clear by then.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question and good point. I will unmute everybody on the call right now if this works, and
Fair, and then I was reading.
And then I'll go back and mute Dispatch. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment this evening? Anyone at all? Public comments for the Board of Select? Hearing, seeing none? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second, it's good to see you all, thank you for your service to the town, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks, right? Stay safe, everybody, stay safe, be smart.
You too, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you.